Reserve funds if we needed them for an emergency situation. I don't think there could get much more of an emergency than a pandemic. We were able to make the decisions and expend the funds we needed. And we would have planned to pay for those out of our budgetary reserve. We ended up getting federal stimulus dollars that were allocated specifically for them. There's a second set of dollars, S R two. Some of that is being planned for this year. And so there are even a few items on our board agenda tonight that were allocated to that. And then the third pot that was given were American Rescue Plan dollars. And those have not been allocated or funds determined just yet. Those will be determined in future years. So we haven't done anything with that. And that will have a different process. They have some different requirements under the American Rescue Plan funds for how we engage with those. We have, we also found out that we received an emergency connectivity grant. We found that out just two weeks ago. Dr. Collette was kind enough to apply for us and we received significant dollars from the emergency connectivity fund, which takes all of the things we had planned to do and changes them because the emergency connectivity fund is much more restrictive. And so we will be working on that. We're actually going to be talking about that in a future projects and planning committee meeting and then also with the board. But we're reworking the funding and the plan for the funding because the emergency connectivity fund is very specific to technology and has very specific allocations that we want to make sure we can use those funds before we dip into funds that have more opportunities for a wider use.
I have a couple of other comments, but I just wanted to make sure other board members, before we move off of the last year's wrap up.
Yeah, so what was the final number?
It's not finalized just yet. Right now, the preliminary number.
The preliminary?
Yes, it is, is about 3.2 million for, for the last year's budget, the 2020, 2021 budget.
And that Plan Con money that we unexpectedly received was put in our capital fund, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you mentioned the S R funds and other monies that we've gotten from the federal government. Are you going to, at some point, provide the board with a plan for how those monies are going to be spent? And when can we expect to see that?
Sure. We, last year, the first set of funds, the S R one, we did provide information to the board as we went. Most of that was for emergency needs right at this moment. For S R two, there are a few things that are on this agenda, but we are actually reworking the plan because since we received this other grant, a lot of the things we had planned to spend that on in S R two and even in the American Rescue Plan, we will not be using the funds for because we received additional grant funds. And so once that plan is done, we're going to bring it to the Projects and Planning Committee, and then we will also share that with the board so that we can do that. But the good news is we received more money. The bad news is that all the plan that we had that I could have shared with you probably this month is now, needs to be revised. But it's revised for the right reasons.
I noted in the transfers that there was a large transfer to capital projects. Can you explain what that is?
Sure. I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right item.
I believe that's the one we approved last month.
That's the Plan, the Plan Con?
That's the Plan Con.
The $2 million?
Yeah.
And that was received, that we did not expect to be received in this calendar year.
Okay.
So it's money we were owed from prior.
From construction, that was years ago, right?
Correct.
2016, I think.
Yeah. The Plan Con process is extensive.
Yeah.
You mentioned that our committees are getting ready to start. I was just, since we're, since it was part of the conversation we were just having, I was just wondering, I know that we are advertising those meetings. I wondered if it might make sense to just put them in our agendas, upcoming meetings, so that our, so that people can have easy access and be able to just sort of know what's coming up and when our committee's meetings are and have that just be a part of what we just generally provide people in our agenda so that it's easy access.
We could certainly discuss that.
The meetings will also be on the district website.
Sure. The more places, the merrier.
Yes.
Any other questions?
At the beginning, when you were speaking, you just said we were finishing up the A F Rs. I'm assuming that's like annual financial review?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes.
I just want to be careful throwing out acronyms.
Thank you for correcting me because I try not to do that, but obviously I just did. It's the Annual Financial Report of the school district. That's the A F R. And when I say S R, it's the every student, I'm sorry, it was, it was something different for, wasn't the every student. I will have to look up, yes. It was a safe, it was something about safety. But anyway, those are the different ones. The ARP is the American Rescue Plan. And I will do better next time to try my best not to use acronyms.
Yep.
Thanks.
I also had a question regarding the Resource Planning Committee because we mentioned the Plan Con, and there was a resource planning discussion that I just wanted to get a recap on because the minutes were a little vague. But it just mentioned a discussion about $215,000 a year going into capital improvements. Is that just a distribution over time of the Plan Con, of the capital funds?
Sure. That's actually regarding the 2017 bond series. And I believe it's the 2017.
It is the 2017.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure because we had two bond series that came through in a short timeframe. So the 2017 bond series, and we actually, when you apply for your bonds, you apply based on, and they do financing based on what they expect. We got our funding, financing rate, and it will actually be $215,000 less than what we expected. And so we are, we now get a reimbursement of $215,000 annually for about another 10 years or so as a result. We discussed that at the Resource Planning Committee. We're looking at applying that to Fund 31, and that will come before the board in a future meeting as well. The reason being is that it was dedicated originally for capital projects, and it's a way to be able to replace that and continue to plan for the next round of capital needs that may occur and will be discussed as, as we keep going in the district.
Right. And for those who aren't aware, we have, almost everything we spend is from Fund 10, our general fund, but Fund 31 is capital. So that's.
Right. Very specific for capital improvements. But there is, if, if the board would need to take that money out again for some other reason other than that, there is, there is a process to be able to do that. So it doesn't forever lock the money in. It's just recommended to keep it there.
Okay. I think this is my last set of questions. On the budget, on the budget, the transfers, this is the first month that you're allowed to make transfers, so there are a number of transfers in there. I always try to look and make the board aware when we have transfers from reserve because we, we set aside a certain amount of money expecting unplanned expenditures. But when we start drawing that down, we want to keep an eye on that because that means it's unplanned and eventually you could hit a point where we run out, which we never have, but as far as I know. But, so we have $1.5 million reserve every, built into the budget. But a couple of items I just wanted to, first of all, one of the big ones is the O'Hara Stream Remediation. I just wanted to see if, is this it? Is this done? Is this the full amount? And then the, a couple of other ones, like the tech, there's a book, English Department books, was that an emergency or why was it unplanned? And the printer, I think there's one for printer services that was coming from reserve. Since anything coming from the reserve is basically unbudgeted, yeah, printer copying lease, I think it came from budgetary reserve, $10,000.
Emergency books?
Sure. The O'Hara, the O'Hara Stream project was obviously an unknown, so it wasn't part of the budget. And the work was completed in the 2021, 2022 school year. So we've recently received billing. There's a small amount yet to be billed. When the project finals is finalized, there's a little bit of work that needs to be completed when the weather gets a little bit colder. So I think there's hope this month or next month that it will be able to be finalized. And all of the expenditures that are listed in the transfers were already approved by the board for this. The board approved the, the project, the contractor in June of this year and had approved two times, actually, the Civil and Environmental Consultants, or C E C, awarded, it was awarded two times, once for the project planning and then once for the actual engineering during the project. And so those were approved in October of 2020 and also in June of 2021. And so these are the transfers because we were now paying the bills. The books, replacement books needed for English, this is actually due to four UN events that failed at the high school in February of 2021. It was on a Sunday. The high school staff found that they had failed on Monday morning early when they arrived at the building. Nine rooms had water in them. So we did water remediation. We took things out. We replaced what we needed to. One of the rooms that was affected was a room where the English department stored books, novels and things that they used for class. They obviously were discarded. They were no longer serviceable. The, this is the replacement for those books based on that flooding. And the reason that we are paying out of the budgetary reserve was the aggregate amount was less than what our insurance deductible would have been. So it didn't make sense to turn it into the insurance company because we still would have been paying for it. So.
But that was February of last year? It took that long to get through our?
Well, the books needed to be ordered and then received. And so some of it is that we don't pay until we receive. So yes. And then the printing copy lease of services, I did talk to Ms. Palisak today. That's a business office contract, and the business office was delayed in receiving the final numbers from the time of budget preparation till the actual invoicing. And so when the budget, when the business office chose to budget it, they budget it low with the idea that if needed, they would use the reserve funds.
I have a quick question about the, I know you've already been asked for an accounting of how we're using the $3 million. I was just wondering that if we're using it in ways that then, you know, things we had allocated for, we don't need that, can we also find out where those funds are going to?
When you, when you say the $3 million, just so I'm clear, because we've talked about a lot of these funds.
So they sound like, you know, they're restricted for certain purposes through the, the different funds that we discussed. And there was a request to ask, you know, how are we using all those funds? But if, if now the funds that we had earmarked for that is being displaced, where are those funds going then?
Sure. Those are for the federal funds, not for the 3.2 million. So those federal funds, most of them haven't been allocated at all. So there's, so it was just an internal plan that we had created as our best thought, and we were waiting on implementing that plan specifically for the emergency connectivity grant period. We will also be delaying a little further because there are still two grants. We, we applied for five. We received word on three. We still have two grants that are out. And the federal government opened a second grant period, and we'll be applying for additional grants, funding. So we will be waiting until we receive those before we move on with that plan. But absolutely, we can certainly share with you that information. We're just kind of in a holding pattern because it was a $7 billion fund from the federal government. And I, I will say, most districts paid somebody to write these grants because we had the information and the expertise in the district. We could write it ourselves, which saved us the cost of paying a grant writer for it. And, and I really do thank Dr. Collette for the tenacity. These are not easy grants to write. And you spend an awful lot of time, I think she and I were chatting on text messages and calls at eight and nine o'clock at night while she was still on customer support. It's just a, it's a touchy system. So the great fund, it's just a touchy system.
Thank you.
Sure.
But we have started to spend some of these monies. I mean, the S, we just saw S R two.
A little bit of S R two, yes. But those were things that we can't purchase out of that connectivity fund. The rest of the plan is, is going to be forthcoming once we reallocate.
Anything else, Mr. Hamilton?
No, that's all.
Okay. Mrs. Lynch, the instruction report.
I will be moving next week on two items. The first is the PASS assessment tool. Approve the purchase of PASS, a social emotional student assessment tool for grades K through 12 for the 2021, 22, 22, 23, and 23, 24 school years at a total cost of $41,000. And the Allegheny Intermediate Units Alternative Education Program. Approve the Alternative Education Program Educational Services Agreement between the Fox Chapel area school district and the Allegheny Intermediate Unit for alternative education services for the 21, 22 school year as attached pursuant to the services agreement that was approved June 14, 2021.
Okay.
I have, I have a comment. I think it was CBS News last week said one in four high school students across the nation needs social or emotional help with this pandemic or to make it through this pandemic. So any kind of assessment tool or help that we, we can give those students, I'm sure we're all in favor of.
And we used the same one last year, correct?
We did. We piloted this last year. It was, it was a different year because some students took it in person and some took it remotely. But we were piloting it to prove the concept. Does it work? And does it give us information that could be helpful? There was another district in our region that also piloted it. So we worked collaboratively to talk about what we were seeing and how we may use that. Actually, the Allegheny Intermediate Unit is also working with this this year. So we were the pilots last year, and now it's, it's being, it's being, it's spreading, I guess, across the country, across the county, I'm sorry. It's used in other regions. It really, it's a student self-assessment that they take, explaining their feelings about school, about themselves as learners and things like that. Just like last year, we will say, I know this was a question earlier, all parents have, can come in and review any of those questions. We had that opportunity last year, and that exists again this year. It's really a student self-report. And then we can use that information to look as to what our students may need. We can use it for some of our interventions. We can use it to look at trends within a building, as to what we may be able to help with. And more importantly, what we're really worried about is making sure that we are not missing a student that we could help in some way, shape or form as best as we can. And so this is just another tool, and it's aligned to a lot of the research regarding social emotional learning. So we're really pleased with it. And certainly, it's voluntary. Nobody is required to take it. Parents are welcome to opt their children out if it's not something that they're comfortable with, or they're also welcome to come and see the, the questions for it and see what it is for themselves.
Is this a confidential survey or anonymous survey?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Is this confidential or anonymous?
It's confidential.
So, so you can track individual students?
Correct. As a district, we get that information. And the thing we liked about it was if a student chose not to answer a question, it doesn't matter. It allows them to continue on. So there's a lot of advocacy that a student can do based on their comfort level.
And this says five assessments. So is that five assessments over the, over the three-year period? So there would be two, two, and one or something?
Something like that, yes.
Okay. So you could measure change in the year.
Right.
How long does it take to complete? Do you know?
Well, that's a, that's a question I may be erroneous on. I think it's less than 30 minutes, though. It's not super invasive as in time.
Yeah, I downloaded a copy of one of the reports, and it looked really interesting. They don't tell you, I didn't see the question, they don't show you the questions, but they do show the domains, and they have a lot of domains. And I think I raised last month the issue of climate surveys. And this is actually broader than a lot of S E L surveys, I thought anyways, in terms of capture some of that climate, both about the instructor, your feelings about instruction, and a lot, a lot of different building level, things that would be interesting to know at the building level or in terms of climate. I was wondering whether the board would get, be able to get a report at the aggregate level, at the high level.
We certainly will be sharing the information with the board. Last year, the pilot, because we were still in a hybrid environment and because of some of the changes, the data we got was good for proof of concept, and we certainly used it in some individual cases. But we'll be with this approval, then we'll get ready for an administration. We certainly can share an executive summary of what we are learning and then how we're using it. I think you're exactly right. It can help at the building level to look at the climate of a building through the eyes of a student and our students, and how our students see themselves as learners, how they see themselves in the building. And I think that's a very important piece to look at, knowing that we've had two and a half, you know, two plus years of disruption. We just don't know what will happen. And we do notice that our students have had less practice in social skills and emotional skills and things like that, just by the nature of, of what we've all gone through. So we hope that this will give us some information to be able to assist students.
Parents would be able to see the questions, or can they see information specific to their child as well?
They should be able to see information specific to their child as well. They may not be able to, it likely can't be sent. I think it's in a system, so they may have to come in to review it. I would have to just ask of the technical requirements of that, but.
Yep. I think that would be important.
Sure.
For those parents.
So does the student have to wave, like to, I was also very interested in if, if we're using the results of the district to help modify or strengthen services. That would be an interesting thing.
That's actually what we're hoping, that we get enough data to be able to help talk about what we might need to do in supports, how we might affect curriculum in the future or other things that we may need to do. Or additionally, things that we're doing well, that we want to make sure we recognize that we're doing well, and to know that then that's something we should likely continue because it seems to be helping. So we did see in the pilot data, we saw a lot of things that we had going, that were going on for our students that they found very successful. And so that was something we wanted to celebrate. And then it just helps us to be able to see, are there student needs that we can still do our best to meet in some way.
So this looks like it's K through 12.
It is K through 12. And it looks different in different levels. But, so if a parent would have a student in multiple levels, we can show you the levels. The question vocabulary changes slightly, but the, the kind of, of questions are the same.
Any other questions or comments?
Right now, we're paying for this out of the S R two funds, which clearly won't be available in three year, like after three school years. Will this then roll back into the regular budgeted costs?
If this is something that after we've done this for multiple years, we want to continue with, yes, then we would, we would figure out a way to allocate that within our own budget. The beautiful thing about S R funds is that we have them. The difficult thing is that you don't want to create funding cliffs for yourself by allocating them to recurring costs. So this is a recurring cost, but we feel that we have other sources that we could assume this cost if need be in the future. And so we felt that it was a good use at this moment in time to try it. And then, once we have a few years' worth of data and experience, we'll know if it's meeting our needs or if there's something else that, that we need to do, or is it time to move on from it.
Mr. Good, legislation and policy?
We won't have anything next week.
Thank you. Dr. Vias, personnel?
Next week, we'll be moving on three items. Number one, resignations. James Baker, athletic supplemental. Meredith Henderson, non-athletic supplemental. Appointments, Stephanie Zier, professional. Sean Flickinger, custodial. Hamlet Dolan, food services. And Trevor Hartless and Mary Gerald Montgomery, athletic. Jessica Marshall, Catherine Gilner, non-athletic. Leave replacements, Samantha Diamond. We'll be moving on those three items.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments?
I just have a question for Mr. Jafra. I'm a volunteer on the wrestling staff, which means I make the same salary as I, as the board members make, but, but I should not abstain from any wrestling position votes. Should I?
You do not have to.
Okay. Thank you. I knew the answer before I asked, but I, I thought in this climate, we should ask. Thank you.
I just had one question. There's, under supplemental contracts, there was a resignation on overnight camp counselor. I assume that's the fifth grade trip that is not occurring?
It's being postponed until the spring right now.
Okay.
So we are hopeful to still have that trip.
Thank you.
Sure. That's the Camp Allegheny.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay. Mrs. Cook, operations and cooperative services.
I have two items. The first one is the Fox Chapel area school district comprehensive emergency management plan to approve the district's plan. This multi-hazard plan replaces the basic emergency plan and is in compliance with state and federal emergency guidelines under the Federal Emergency Management Agency, the National Incident Management System, and the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency. This plan must be updated and approved annually. The second is a service agreement with the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit. To approve this agreement, to provide level data services, to automate the creation and deletion process of students and staff, increasing data interoperability, reliability, and security effective December 1st, 2021 through November 30th, 2022. The cost is $12,848.73 as attached. This is a renewal of services and will be funded by the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I didn't know if you wanted to talk a little bit about the plan, and I know you can't share specifics, but like who's involved in putting it together, just like the level of planning that went into the plan.
Sure. These plans are required by every school district, and they are submitted to appropriate state agencies as well and provided to the people that need to be. And Officer Kazarian really takes the lead on this. And I know both Dr. McCommins and I also are involved, as well as at times our building level administrators or other support staff are involved in that. I know that Dr. McCommins did the first pass at this. I don't know if there's anything that you want to add regarding it.
The only changes from the last plan that we had are just tagos of, from different positions or individuals have, you know, moved on to other, the current update to who the current personnel are in each of the items are the only changes.
And, and really, it's, it's under the National Incident Management System, and the NIM system was created a number of years ago, really, as a result of, of learning that agencies needed a common language to be able to speak together. And so people in the district are trained in the NIMs protocol. Emergency responders are trained in the NIMs protocol. And then plans over the years have become more and more formulaic to meet the NIMs protocol so that there is, it's easily understood if you're in the situation of an emergency. And there's regular training that goes into the people that need to do this plan so that they can make sure that they are keeping it up to date with what the best practices are and what our requirements are. And it essentially outlines if something were to happen, here are all of the things that we are going to do internally, externally, and any other things that might need to happen. And outlines who's responsible, how that's going to happen, how communication will happen, those kinds of things.
So is it just more detailed than the basic emergency plan or?
It is more detailed, yes.
Is that the big difference?
Yes.
So an example would be like evacuation plans?
All kinds of things that, that, all the disasters that you could imagine.
Right.
And it includes all that kind of information and what we specifically plan.
Flow charts and things like that, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we will have our second public comment period. And Kelly Strain, you are up.
Thank you. Kelly Strain, 1808 Main Street. Please expedite the virtual public comment process and do not put a cap on the amount of public comments taken on any issue. On D E I, I would like the district to post what the schools are teaching related to our new D E I policy. Also, I do not agree that Dr. Almasi should have been contracted to teach our educators. I do appreciate that Dr. Reljack responded to my email, though, about Dr. Almasi. In relation to expenses, the district should list specifically what they are purchasing, for what reason, and for whom the purchase is being made. Amazon, Panera, Chick-fil-A, Walmart, Sam's Club, Seven Springs, the Sheridan. As a taxpayer, it would be nice to know what these purchases are and for whom you are purchasing them for. There should be an opt-out mechanism for face masks in our school. I told all three of my kids if they decide they don't want to wear the face mask to take it off. I told them that based on what I have seen, I don't believe that some who voted to forcibly mask my children believe COVID-19 is as dangerous as they say or as they vote. For that reason, I urge them not to comply. Thank you.
Thank you. Fox Chapel Educators Association.
Just wanted to make one quick announcement in relationship to, the district already posted that FCA is joining in with the W P I L with the Food and Fun Drive for this month, for October, benefiting the Pittsburgh Food Bank and Greater North Hills Food Bank's community outreach. So that started this past Friday at the homecoming weekend where people were able to drop off food. The district has also posted it on their website where people can actually donate money if they would rather do that instead of the food collection. But the teachers will be collecting on our own through FCA, but also if parents or but also if parents or community members would want to drop stuff off at buildings, we will have collection sites there. We'll be doing that through October 20. And then we will be delivering that food on October 22. Other than that, thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Board comments. Mr. Frank?
Okay. Excuse me. I do have three. Number one, I wanted to piggyback on Dr. Reljack's comments. Homecoming was outstanding. It was a wonderful, a truly wonderful community event. Thanks to Mrs. Makovic and all the staff members across the district who were there and the students who participated in a gamut of things. And it was just wonderful. Mr. O'Brien said it was the largest crowd he has had in his 14 or 15 years here. It was, it was a great evening enjoyed by everybody in the community that attended. Number two, I was encouraged to read about Mandy Steele and the Fox Chapel Borough Council approving the investment in solar energy. When we begin board comment, board committees, I hope solar is an area that our district can and will explore. And I might also include our, our other district communities. Hopefully, they explore it as well. And three, get out to vote next month. And I'll say it again next week, but get out to vote next, next month. Complacency is is not good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Cook?
I'd just like to also reiterate that I am very impressed and grateful for all the work that everyone did, not only for homecoming, but all the activities we've had so far in the school year to welcome our students and for our students and faculty and staff to make sure that we can do our best to make sure that we remain in school and have activities together by being as safe as possible. I really do appreciate all the work that everybody has been doing. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Dr. Vias?
I have no comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lynch.
I am very excited about committees coming up and the work that we're going to do there. And I concur with Mr. Frank that anything in the sustainability, solar panel conversation are absolutely things that we as a district should be looking at. And I am hopeful that that planning committee will be taking a close look at those issues.
Thank you. Mr. Hamilton?
I would second that as well. I think it might be a good use for some of our unexpected windfall on capital reserves. It'd be a good long-term investment. I also hope we'll come back to a discussion about where we are in in future meetings, maybe not next week, but about the public comment and public access virtually versus as well as in person. And and look at any complications there, but also just try to move that along. And that's it for me. Oh, thank you for this. Homecoming was great.
Thank you. Mr. Good?
I want to congratulate all the students again. It's great to have them come to these meetings. Otherwise, I don't, we wouldn't get to see them. That's, that's a great part of this work. And I wanted to say thanks to the organizers of the flu vaccine clinic. That was great. We used that. It was very fast. It was, it was, it was very, very good. And so I heard it was very popular and more, more clinics were opened up. So great job with that.
Thank you. Mrs. Cooper?
Just a thank you to everyone for getting our school year off to a great first month. It's been really encouraging as well to see all those sort of social and fun activities come back. It's definitely the ways that students make fond memories. They typically look back on those things, not necessarily like math. But it's just been great and I'm looking forward to, there's just more community involvement, ways for parents to get involved coming up. And I think these are just the parts that makes us feel more like a connected community with our district. So it's just really encouraging to see those things come back.
Thank you. As we mentioned earlier, our school board committees are starting up this month. We have the Governance Committee meeting will be next Tuesday, October 12 at 6:00 PM. Then the Academic Committee will be October 19 at 6:00 PM. And the Projects and Planning Committee will be October 26 at 6:00 PM. So far, each committee will begin meeting monthly. They will always be on those Tuesdays and at 6:00 PM. And we will be meeting in the Professional Development Room, which is, if you go past the auditorium here, there's kind of a little side entrance. And those meetings are open to the public. Will people be able to enter through that side door?
Yes, they will be able to.
Okay. So those meetings are open to the public. And again, the dates will be on the website. So.
Excuse me.
Did I get a date wrong?
We'll make sure we have signage up for any, if anyone is interested, to make sure the community members will know where to go.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
Thank you. Meeting, oh, all in favor? Meeting adjourned.